Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our June seventeenth monthly council meeting. Uh, we do have a quorum, uh, present tonight. And, uh, we have, um, on my right to your left would be Councilman Julius Buckley, Councilman Roscoe Warwick, Councilman Brent McWaters, our City Secretary, Ms. Juanita Lamong, our City Manager, Mr. Lee Tipton. This would be Mr. Lee's first official meeting, and we, we happy to have him. Also to my left, your right will be our, uh, City Attorney, Mr. Tommy Ramsey, Councilwoman Desiree David, and Councilwoman, uh, Rachel Hall. So we have, uh, Brother Tim Holder. He's gonna come tonight, and he's gonna do our opening prayer for us. And after that, I'd like for Councilwoman Rachel Hall to do both pledges for us, please. Brother Holder.
Heavenly Father, we praise you for the privilege of just being here tonight. We thank you for our city. We thank you, Lord, for our council, for, uh, our new city manager. We thank you so much, Lord, for all that you've provided for this town. Lord bless the decisions that are made here tonight and each night, Lord, that our city can grow and make what you would have it to do, Jesus, Lord. Uh, we just dedicate this time to you, Escrable Lord, here in that. For it's in the precious name of Jesus that we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, I'm gonna be, I've got two, Mr. Robinson, he's not gonna be there. First of all. First of all, um, Mr. Bill Robinson is not here tonight. Some mechanic, a camera, so we'll get there here. So I'm gonna ask Mr.
Melton. Melton.
Mr. Melton, please come forward. I've got stuff going here. Thank you, Mr. Melton, for coming here for, uh, quite a few times. I've talked to you before.
I've been here a long time.
I have a proclamation I want, uh, on behalf of me and, and the city of Cleveland, I wanna read this proclamation. Whereas operations of ham amateur radio, also known as ham radio, are celebrating more than the century of voice data and picture transmissions over the airwaves to locations across the globe without internet or cell phone networks. And whereas amateur radio operators provide a bridge between people, societies, and the countries that have delivered countless items for free, self-supporting radio communications for local governments and organizations during disaster and post-disaster situations for pre-planned non-emergency events and charitable activities. And whereas these amateur radio services are provided wholly uncompensated, and whereas the city of Cleveland recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams who also serve as weather spotters in the SkyCam program of the National Weather Service. And whereas the American Radio Relay, Relay League of Amateur Radio Field Day Exercise would take place June twenty eighth, twenty ninth, twenty four, uh, twenty twenty five, and is a twenty-four hour emergency preparedness exercise in demonstration of radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. There, I, Danny Lee, Mayor of the City of Cleveland, Cleveland, Texas, do hereby proclaim twenty second through twenty eighth day of June twenty twenty five as amateur radio and witness radio. I hereby set my hand, cause the vicious seal of the City of Cleveland, Texas, to be fixed, uh, Juanita Lamong, City Secretary, Danny Lee, Mayor. Sir, we appreciate your service. You've been doing this a long time.
A few days.
Yeah, a few days. You've been doing this a long time. We just appreciate everything you do. Because, uh, you know, over the years, you know, with all of the new technology coming in and the internet, but at the end of the day, though, the best, the ham radio. Yes, sir. But I want to present you with this proclamation, sir. Thank you. Oh, okay. Mr. Tipton, would you come up with me, please? Come on, Mrs. Cody.
On behalf, City of Cleveland, uh, this certificate is awarded to, uh, Mr. Cody Arnold, Arnold, in recognition of his outstanding performance, hard work, and dedication to the City of Cleveland, May twenty twenty five, Employee of the Month, dated this day, seventeenth June, twenty twenty four. Danny Lee, Mayor, Lee Tipton, City Manager. Cody, look, I just wanna thank you, man, for, you know, everything that you do for the city. I mean, you here twenty-four seven. I mean, you know, you always answer the bell, no matter what happens, no matter what we go through, disasters, everyday stuff. Everybody know Cody gonna answer the bell and do what he gotta do, and you're gonna do it in a, in a good professional manner. So it's an honor to me to award this to you tonight.
Thank you again, Cody.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, Ms. Ashley.
Okay, City of Cleveland certifies that Ashley Broussard Carter has successfully completed ten years of employment with the City of Cleveland, and is therefore awarded this certificate of appreciation dated this day, seventeenth of June, twenty twenty five. Danny Lee, Mayor, Lee Tipton, City Manager, and Ashley, uh, you're a jewel for the City of Cleveland. We know we can always depend on you. I mean, you there every day. Uh, you do a tremendous job, you know, out in the public, you know, with the people, and also with your service, you know, at the Civic Center. And I just want you to know that, you know, you are appreciated in, in what you do. And, uh, give us another ten years, if you can. But I wanna present this to you.
Okay, we have our public comments. Are there any more sign up for public comments? Okay, public comments, any person with city-related business may speak to council in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. The City of Cleveland may not discuss or vote on any matter raised in public comments unless it's specifically on the agenda. To speak at a council meeting, you must be recognized by the presiding officer. Uh, public comments will be limited to three minutes. And when you see Ms. Juanita raise a hand like that, that means your three minutes is done. So tonight, we have Mr. Melton again. And, uh, he's gonna give us another dose of ham radio. We love it, we love it.
Mayor, Council?
Yes, sir.
Not prepared, just ad hoc here. Thank you all for your recognition of us. Our Field Day is coming up that weekend that we're looking at, and we would like to formally invite every one of you, everybody in the room, to stop by and see how we do it. We'll be at the old city park, I hope. Start about, uh, we start setting up about ten o'clock. Start operating about noon or one o'clock. Twenty-four hours, we're gonna sit there and talk, try to make contacts. But we'd like to show the world what we do. Uh, we also have, uh, classes, help people learn what to do. We have, uh, in this area, we've got about twelve testers volunteer to test people, answer these thirty-five questions, and you can get a license. Unfortunately, it costs about thirty-five dollars now. It costs fifteen dollars to take a test. So you're looking at about fifty dollars. And then you have to spend a whole bunch of money. They got these things down to twenty dollars now on Amazon. And people online trying to sell them for fifty. Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Melton.
We have rest of our club back here in the corner.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Melton, and let's don't forget the, the ham radio event on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Yeah, twenty-eighth, so we'll see you then. Okay. Now we have our, uh, comments section. I'm gonna start on my left, which would be your right if you're watching on, uh, TV. Uh, Ms. Rachel Hall, do you have any comments for tonight?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Is this someone? Um, so this afternoon, I had the opportunity to, uh, attend, there we go, thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the Liberty County Community Coalition Meeting in regards to community disaster preparedness. And there are a lot of local organizations that came together at Health Center Southeast Texas to talk about the importance of being prepared. So I want to encourage everyone to have their emergency plan in place for their family, as well as check out the Liberty County Community Coalition Facebook page so you can find more information of the resources they mentioned, as well as the resource fair that they will be bringing to our community next month. Additionally, I want to say congratulations to our young kids right now presenting their business models at the library with their kids' pop-up event. It's happening right now until seven-thirty, so congratulations to them and those supporting them in the library for being a resource for those kids to come out to the community and do their pop-up market. And then also remind the community that we have a event this weekend for honoring first responders and veterans at DeMontron Ford. There's also several other community events going on. And so check out and follow the Facebook pages. It's being shared quite a bit around, or ask your neighbors, because there's gonna be a lot of things to do in the community this weekend on Saturday.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Uh, Ms. David.
Saturday, uh, June twenty-first, at Church Without Love, Pastor Raphael and Child Driver are having a food pantry giveaway. Um, June twenty-first, nine AM to twelve PM, and that's one zero three East Crockett, Cleveland, Texas, seven seven three two seven.
Okay, Mr. McWaters.
Just wanna say, welcome, uh, Mr. Tipton. Good to have you with us and everything. And I wanna say also thank you to all the members of our, all our department heads, uh, everybody, uh, that took part in the retreat a few weeks ago. That was a, that was a great time, a lot of great information. Y'all all came prepared and gave a, and gave a lot of useful information, uh, to not only the council, but I thought it was a good, uh, good for everybody attending. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Warwick.
Good evening, everyone. Everything's good.
Good, okay.
Uh, this past week, I was able to attend, uh, Michael Duran's tree planting that they had at the Civic Center. It was a good event. I can't remember the lady's name that sang, but she can really sing.
Yeah.
Didn't even need the microphone if you were there. But, uh, no, everything else was good. We had an airport board meeting that went pretty well, I believe. I think Aaron can, could side with it. And, uh, we also have our ninetieth celebration on Thursday, July third, for the fireworks and everything. That'll be at the Cleveland Football Field. It starts at seven, so hopefully we'll see y'all there, too.
Okay, Mr. Tipton.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm just excited to be here.
Yeah, you, you good. Is he okay?
Yeah, just excited to be here. I appreciate it, and I'm, I'm honored to be here. You know, I just look forward to gaining some experience and also contributing my expert, uh, experience to the city and, you know, moving it forward.
Okay, well, I just wanna say, i- it feels good to have everybody in place now. I mean, uh, these days, I've been sleeping real good at night. Because for the last two months, I had a, you know, a lot of sleepless nights. But, uh, uh, like I say, I'm just happy. I mean, this is all a win for the city. I mean, we got our team together, and, you know, let's just, you know, keep doing what we doing. And, and I always say, uh, 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 with our economic development, I was telling Emilio the other, the other week about all we need to do is hit one home run. So, you know, we're really, really into the economic development. You know, we're trying to bring things to Cleveland. You know, we're trying to put our, uh, best foot forward. And, uh, that's in all departments, whether it be our first responders, our library. Uh, they have so many activities going on, uh, this summer. Uh, check out the, uh, City of Cleveland webpage. Uh, they got a lot of things going on for kids, you know, here in Cleveland, uh, with the city and, and with the local churches. And also, I'mma kinda chime in on what, uh, Mr. Buckley said about the, uh, Fourth of July celebration, which will be, uh, Thursday, July third. It'll be at the, uh, Indian Stadium, okay? Uh, I don't know if you attended last year, but it was really, really awesome. Uh, we want everybody to come out. This will be the ninetieth year celebration for the City of Cleveland. We want everybody to come out to the football stadium. Uh, you can bring your lawn chairs. A lot of, a lot of people were in the parking lot at the stadium, uh, in the parking lot at, uh, Olive's, Tractor Supply. A lot of people just set, sit out in their front yards. And, uh, the fire display was absolutely awesome. So I'm just really looking forward to it, and I'd just like for everyone to, to spread the word, you know, we doing good things here in, in Cleveland, Texas. I mean, we putting our best foot forward. But, uh, that's all I have, uh, for this month. Okay, now we're gonna go ahead to our consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests that the item be removed and considered separately.
Mr. Mayor, can we please remove number nine?
Number nine?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I'll make a motion that we approve number ten and eleven on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a, a motion to approve number ten and eleven. I have a motion by Mr. Buckley.
Oh, that's safe.
Oh, I'm sorry, by Ms. Hall, I'm sorry. I have a second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries, uh, five to zero. Now we'll go back to, uh, item number nine. Ms. Hall.
I have a question, but Pam, actually specifically, it's in regards to EDC. So if Emilio. I, I had a question on that one particular page.
Do my best.
Okay, um, on the budget here, and this is for April, for the fiscal year, um, as of April, I understand, um, under business incentives, because we just talked about how we're, um, really aiming on the business incentives here. We have one for incentives for two hundred thousand dollars. And my question is, do we have anything on our website that tells people, like, the, uh, the requirements for those incentives? Or how do businesses find out about that money that is available that has not yet been spent in this fiscal year?
So we have on the EDC website, we have a t, a page that talks about the Business Improvement Grant, and I believe the guidelines are up there now. Um, as far as promotion of that, you know, we're down a position in, in that area. Uh, so hopefully, when we onboard that new person soon, we'll be able to kind of focus, you know, when Sosha was here, we developed a marketing strategy for EDC. We just haven't been able to execute on that with his departure. So we'll hopefully start to resume that once we have somebody in that role. So we'll hopefully start to resume that once we have somebody in that role.
Okay. And you actually, you touched on the Business Improvement Grant, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was my next question. It's a separate line item. Is that the rename of what used to be the facade grant?
No, those incentives for two hundred were there for, like, mega projects, whether to do, you know, infrastructure or, you know, job creation incentives for industrial projects to help, you know, create primary jobs and attract large-scale investment. So those were, and those were allocated, just not very, uh, just not earmarked, because we wanted to be flexible with that funding.
Okay. And so between the incentives and the Business Improvement Grant, that's also something that's available to our small businesses within the community? And they can go to the website to find out more about the details or requirements for...
For the Business Improvement, yes, they can go to the website.
Okay. So that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars available now, and we have not spent any, but they can go to the website and find more information?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll do a better job of explaining what's available to support small businesses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mega motion, we approve item number nine.
Second.
Okay, I have a, uh, motion by Mr. Buckley. I have a second by Ms., uh, Rachel Hall. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries, uh, five to zero. Okay, now we'll go to our regular agenda discussion. Uh, item number twelve, uh, be the fiscal year, uh, twenty-twenty-four audit presentation. Yeah, it's, it's on, yeah. Okay.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name's Lewis Bree Love, Senior Audit Manager at Brooks Watson, filling in for Mike Brooks, who's, uh, out of town this evening. Um, so I'll be presenting for you the, the results for the last fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, in front of you, you should have a bound copy of the, of the report, as well as in the front cover. I've got a printout of that presentation, and there's two letters that come with the report. Um, so I'll be utilizing, uh, that PowerPoint presentation to go over the results of the audit. It's not gonna work. Okay, that's okay. Uh, so first, I do like to give a quick overview of the audit process. So, uh, first, we do, uh, perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Uh, and when we, we perform it into various phases. So the first phase being the assessment phase. So, uh, that includes, um, us reviewing and evaluating each of the areas within the city. Really, we're, anywhere where money's coming in and going out, we're looking to see what kind of controls are in place. Uh, we have detailed walkthrough procedures, uh, questionnaires that are completed. If there are any existing policies, procedures for those departments within the city, we review those in detail as well. Uh, and then we also do sample testing over each of those areas, so that way we can see, uh, if what's happening in practice is consistent with what we've seen in those walkthroughs, policies, and procedures. Uh, from that, if we saw any room for improvement or control concerns, that we would then bring those to management's, uh, attention. Uh, thankfully, we did not have any to report there. Uh, everything looked really good. Um, then we do what's called a risk-based approach. So every year, uh, we perform a new assessment over each with, uh, each financial statement line item within the financial statements. So, uh, each financial statement line item has a different risk associated with it, and uh, it can change from year to year. Uh, and we evaluate the risk of the, of those items to determine what type of procedures we need to perform, what level of detail we need to perform those procedures to ensure we're comfortable with the material accuracy of the financial statements. Uh, then, then we do our compliance testing. So, uh, that consists of various things. Uh, we look to see if there's any grant requirements, like, if, if, if the city were to meet the requirement for a single audit, we would perform those. Uh, we also read, read all of the City Council meeting minutes that are performed, uh, or uh, completed during the, throughout the year. Uh, and so those meeting minutes are evaluated to see if you all may have approved something that has a compliance component to it. Uh, it, as well as bid requirements and, uh, Public Fund Investment Act. Uh, so we're evaluating to ensure the city is in compliance with all those areas. Uh, then we do what we call fieldwork, where it's that year-end piece where we're actually tying out the numbers. So we perform cutoff procedures over the balance sheet. We confirm with third party wherever possible, like the bank and, uh, other outs, uh, outside parties. And then we are testing the material accuracy of your revenues and expenses for the year. Uh, once all procedures have been completed, then it moves into that conclusion and reporting phase. So it's gonna give, uh, it's gonna go through multiple layers of review to ensure no additional procedures are necessary, uh, and then, uh, go through that reporting preparation that we have for you this evening. And next. Uh, so this is a go over the components within the report. So, uh, from front to back, there's an introductory section within the report. Behind that's your financials, uh, financial section. It's gonna include the auditor's opinion, and that's our opinion over the financials. Uh, the management's discussion and analysis, so that's gonna give you some year-to-year comparison over the, over each of the years, as well as cover some of the higher, um, uh, sensitive areas such as capital, debt, uh, budget, and things of that nature. Uh, behind that's your fi, uh, financial statements. So that's gonna include both your government-wide and fund-level statements. Um, then there's the notes, the financial statement, and those notes are gonna give you a lot of detail for, uh, that, uh, concern the numbers in the financial statements. And oftentimes, we'll give you a breakdown, uh, of the, the numbers that are in the financial statements to provide context for what those are. Uh, behind that's your supplementary information, uh, such as TMRS and other things of that nature. Uh, and then behind that's your statistical section. So that's gonna go, give you ten years of historical data, uh, wherever possible, uh, to just provide, uh, a, this another level of, of transparency and, uh, detail. And then, uh, uh, we have, concerning that, auditor's opinion letter, there's four possible opinion types that we as auditors are able to provide. So there's, uh, an unmodified, a qualified, a disclaimed, or an adverse opinion. Uh, the city did receive an unmodified opinion. It's often referred to as a clean opinion. And that's the highest level of assurance that we as auditors are able to provide. Uh, and I did wanna point out that the city did receive, uh, award again for this past fiscal year, um, its fifth consecutive year, and we fully expected the city would be able to receive that award again this next year. Next, just a few financial highlights for the year. So overall, total assets exceeded total liabilities for, for all aspects of the city by sixty-four point seven million. Uh, that's an overall increase of eighteen point eight million. Uh, the city governmental funds, all in total, had a combined ending fund balance of ten point eight million, and that was an increase of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand from the previous year. Uh, when we look at the general fund, we always look to see, uh, what the unassigned fund balance is of the fund. So, uh, looking at that there, of the general fund, there was seven point seven million or sixty-six percent of the general fund, fund expenditures. So that means that, uh, when comparing your expenditures for the year over to your unassigned fund balance, we wanna see how, how far would you be able to operate into that next year, assuming expenses were consistent with the previous year? Um, and I like to, I looked at the view at it, if, as if no funds were coming in, how would you be able to operate into that next year? How far would you be able to operate? And so sixty-six percent, uh, is that number, which is, uh, we like to see at least twenty-five, thirty percent, so, uh, and I think the city has a goal of twenty-five percent so far exceeding that goal, and so it's a very healthy position. And then as it relates to, to TMRS's net pension liability, uh, that balance for, at the end of the year was one point seven million. Next, as it relates to your governmental activities revenues, so this is a chart of the overall breakdown of those. And this, uh, this slide, uh, specifically is just covering, um, the, the primary inch, primary, uh, major changes from the previous year. So overall, governmental revenues, uh, was fourteen point seven million. This was an increase of one point three million from the previous year. Uh, looking at, uh, the major movers within that category, property taxes, we saw an increase of one point three million. Uh, that's due to both, uh, property evaluation increases as well as rate changes from the previous year. Uh, your sales tax were at just over five million, which increased by six hundred eighty-one thousand from the previous year, just due to, uh, just more economic growth, more purchases, uh, locally. Uh, and then your franchise and local taxes, uh, was at six hundred twenty-four thousand, uh, but that is a decrease for, uh, by ninety-one thousand from the previous year. And then, next, as it relates to those governmental activity expenses, uh, total expenses for the year were just over twelve million. Uh, that's an increase of five hundred ninety-eight from the previous year. Some of the major movers within that category, public safety, uh, we saw, uh, that has a total expense of five point six million. That's a, uh, just a minor increase of twenty-seven thousand, but is the largest, uh, expense category. Uh, then we have the general governmental, uh, category. It had two point one million. Um, of that, uh, that was an increase of three hundred seventeen thousand from the previous year. Uh, and that increase was, I think, I actually noted that, uh, that increase was due to the, uh, change in, uh, personnel, but primarily due to the debris removal, uh, that occurred during the year from, uh, Hurricane, uh, Barrel. Uh, public works expenses, uh, was, uh, at seven hundred ninety-one thousand for the year. That's a de, uh, decrease actually, from, of thirty-nine thousand. And then, uh, transportation expenses were at one point two million, and that was an increase of three hundred thirty-five thousand due to the, uh, the city taking over the management of the airport during the year. It was a primary cause for that change. Next, this is a quick summary of the financials, uh, for all the, the major, uh, funds within governmental side. So general fund, uh, we s, uh, looking at that, that large circle there, it show, is highlighting the net change in fund balances for each of those funds. So general fund, we saw an increase in fund balance of five hundred nineteen thousand. Um, and debt, and we're gonna take a look at the budget to actual for that here in just a second. Uh, the debt service fund had a decrease of forty thousand, um, primarily due to the TERS. Now, capital projects, we saw a decrease there of four hundred and nine thousand as well. Uh, that, and that's due to just the utilization of those capital project funds and ongoing projects that are occurring. And then that non-major governmental funds column is capturing all remaining, uh, funds within the city that do not meet the requirement to be presented as a major fund. Uh, those are all primarily special revenue funds. And so overall, we saw an increase there of six hundred and eight, uh, seventy-eight thousand, uh, and the, all of those are in line with our expectation with the use of those restricted funds. Next, uh, this is a ge, uh, just hitting on that unassigned fund balance that I spoke on earlier, uh, for twenty twenty-four, that, that sixty-six percent. Uh, you can see that there's a historical trend of it, uh, decreasing slightly, but kinda hovering in that si- sixty, mid-sixty, uh, range, uh, uh, which is, and again, as I stated earlier, a very good position as, um, twenty-five, thirty percent is a good marker. Fifty percent would be like excellent, and this is exceeding that. So it's in a good position. This is the budget to actual, uh, summary for the general fund. So that far right column is, is showing the results of the difference between the actual numbers for the year and the final budget adopted by council. Total revenues, we saw a positive variance there at four hundred seventy-three thousand, uh, so four hundred seventy-three thousand more coming in than budget. Uh, total expenses, we saw were, uh, under budget by six hundred fifty-six thousand. Um, and then total other sources and uses, uh, that's gonna be transfers in and out, had a positive variance at two seventy-five, but gives you a total net positive budget variance of one point four million for the year. Uh, so assuming the city was able to accomplish everything you were seeking to accomplish for the year, that's a sign of a very, very healthy fiscal budget. Next, this is hitting on the water sewer. This is a summary of the, uh, the revenues and expenses statement here. Um, first thing I always like to look at here and wanna make sure I highlight is the operating line item, uh, of four hundred and ten thousand. So, uh, oftentimes, we'll see, uh, we, we wanna make sure that this, that it is operating as a business. So water sewer funds do function differently than all the governmental funds. We do, we, it operates like a business, and so we evaluate it accordingly. Uh, we wanna make sure it's in a healthy position. Um, and, uh, oftentimes, we'll see these just barely breaking even or even in a negative on the, uh, on the operating side. And so, uh, so the operating income of four-ten is, is a good sign. It's, uh, operating in, uh, good, uh, health for the fund. Uh, and then below that, you'll see there's non-operating revenue and activity before transfers, uh, and capital contributions, and the, um, and capital contributions of fifteen point six million, uh, which is, uh, due to the development, uh, developer, um, within the, the city that, as they develop those, those have contributed to the city. Uh, and so giving you a total net change in the, in that fund of fifteen point two million for the year after all transfers. Uh, so water, water funds in, in healthy position and everything looks good there. And then next, this is, uh, referencing those two letters that come with the report. So there's the, the first letter is that one that's stapled. It's the communication with those charged with governance. So that letter has a lot of required communication in it, um, as it relates to our responsibilities over the audit. It also goes over management's responsibility as it pertains to the audit. Um, and there are a few items that I always do like to, to pull out and highlight from that letter. Is one, the audit was conducted in compliance with all ethics requirements regarding independence. Um, two, uh, we had no difficulties encountered when working with management. And then three, uh, all audit adjustments identified were corrected by management. Uh, the communication, the second letter is the communication regarding internal controls. Uh, so this would be where we would highlight any, uh, control concerns, uh, any fraud highlights, anything like that. And, uh, thankfully, uh, you'll see it's a one-pager, because there's nothing to report. Uh, there is, uh, one boilerplate comment of just due to the journal entries, um, but that, uh, thankfully, there's no, uh, risk concerns that we have, or I, to identify, uh, that we needed to communicate to you all. So, um, those are always the best kind of, uh, reports to give. Uh, so, um, with that, I'll, I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Not all at once?
Well, I do, I'm sorry, Nick. Uh, I do just wanna also just, uh, say, I wanna just thank the staff here. I, I unfortunately was not able to be the one that worked on this audit, but from what I've heard from Mike Brooks and the team, that, uh, you guys have a great crew to work with. They, um, even being shorthanded, uh, put, put, uh, everything they could into getting us everything we needed for the audit and answered all questions, uh, promptly, and just were on top of it as much as possible. So, uh, you guys, uh, should, should feel, uh, good about the crew that you have here working in the finance department.
Yeah. Well, uh, Mr. Bree Love, I just wanna say, uh, I told you back, you know, earlier, when you told me everything looked good. You had me right then. So everything looks good. I see the growth in the sales tax, property tax. So, uh, let's just keep doing what we're doing, you know, just one day at a time. Uh, I wanna thank our, uh, uh, finance department, Pam, Danielle, uh, uh, I wanna just thank y'all for the work that y'all put in. You know, we just, you know, let's just look forward to next year. Just keep taking it one day at a time. But thank you, sir, and, you know, we appreciate your time tonight, and, and be safe going home, man.
Thank you all.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna move along to item number thirteen, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, capital carryovers, and year twenty-five, mid-year budget amendments. Uh, Ms. Pam.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, um, the capital carryovers are an annual, um, request that we have once the audit has been presented. You have the ordinance and the detail for the carryovers. And you also have in that, uh, with that ordinance, we included the mid-year amendments. So the capital carryovers are for projects that were previously approved by the council for fiscal year twenty-four or prior years, depending if it's a multi-year project, that were not finished at nine-thirty. So of these amount, uh, the total capital carryovers that will increase our budget, uh, by, basically utilizing what he said was in the fund balance, is what we're going to do. It's seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, six, uh, seven hundred thirty-two thousand, sixty-five dollars, and I have the detail of the capital carryovers. This is Exhibit A. Are there any questions on the capital?
I, I do have a question only, um, I guess going back here, on marketing under the EDC where the increase was close to seventy thousand. Is that due to the positions that we added?
No. So that marketing line item, that is actual, actually for the marketing expense. That's for the, uh, unused funds that were allocated, uh, in twenty twenty-four budget. So the, we're, um, allowed to allocate up to ten percent of the annual budget to marketing, and we allocated eighty-five thousand, I believe, last year, and this is the remainder. We spoke with the auditors and legal, and they said it was okay to carry it over to the next year.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Hmm? And so, and the other, any other questions on capital? Okay. And Exhibit B is for the current year budget amendments. This just shows, um, different revenues and expenses that have been incurred this year that, um, um, instead of waiting till the end of the year, I'm gonna do them now, and then I'll do another one next, at the end of the year, so there's not so many at once. If you'll notice, most of them have the increase in, um, if you look at the far-right column, the increase-decrease, those numbers zero out. The only ones that don't zero out are the fire vehicles, and that's for the booster that, uh, council approved, the hundred and fifty thousand, so that's the difference in that. And then at the very end, the EDC, they're paying for the library fence. So it looks like, uh, it's an expense for, um, EDC. It increases their expenses by ten thousand. It increases their expenses by ten thousand one hundred forty-two dollars. But on the admin side, if you look at the fund one hundred, it's a net effect of zero. So it's not utilizing anything out of general fund, but it does show the increase in the expense for EDC. Are there any questions on those?
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Buckley. I have a second by Mr. Matt Waters. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Pam.
I'm here for the next.
Okay, we got you. We'll keep you a little longer then.
Okay, so item number fourteen is the ordinance to authorize the execution of the SIB loan. As you may recall, the highway one oh five relocation of the water line, council approved for us to go out for a loan for that. The total cost came to about, I believe, six hundred and forty-nine thousand or six hundred seventy-nine thousand. But we did a ten percent increase, which was a total of seven hundred and fifteen thousand to cover the cost of the relocation of the line. So this ordinance is just our formal approval to execute the loan. We, the prior resolution was for the loan application. This is for the execution of the actual loan. And the payment, the repayment schedule is in there that will be included in all the future year budgets. It's a ten-year loan. Have any questions on that one?
Make a motion to approve item fourteen.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Matt Waters. I have a second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Want to stay a little longer, Pam?
One more.
Okay, item number fifteen, resolution to authorize Lee Tipton to sign on the city-related bank accounts and remove Scott Swager.
And that's exactly what this is. We just have to have the resolution signed and sent over to the bank so that we can remove Scott and add Mr. Tipton to our bank accounts.
Make a motion to approve item number fifteen.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Buckley. I have a second by Ms. Hall. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Okay, item number sixteen, discussion and possible adoption, adoption of the Cleveland Parks Strategic Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Emilio Lavario, Director of Community Development. If you'll recall, last meeting, we had this on the agenda, but we didn't have the requisite backup to y'all. So hopefully you've had time to digest all those hundreds of pages of background and recommendations and so forth. But just overall overview, the Cleveland Strategic Parks Plan is a comprehensive roadmap to guide the city of Cleveland in its next years and decades of advancing and expanding its parks and recreation system. So it's developed in partnership with Burdette Consulting, who gave the presentation at last month's workshop. And so the plan reflects extensive public input, on-the-ground assessments, strategic visioning, all to ensure that our parks serve as vibrant, inclusive, and well-maintained spaces for residents and visitors. So some of the key drivers, I'll just hit the high points. So rapid population growth, as you know, we're growing. This region of Houston metro is growing, and it's just not inside the city, it's outside as well. And so we are a activity center. We are a major trade area for this region, so a lot of daytime population, a lot of traffic in Cleveland. So that does put a strain on our park system and our facilities. So we looked at the existing park system, which includes five city parks covering about a hundred and twenty-seven acres. And, you know, as kind of our wastewater and water system infrastructure is aging, so is our park system. And so we identified the gaps in service and amenities there as well. And so we also conducted community surveys, gathered public feedback. And so there is strong support for upgrades and enhancements and adding new amenities and additional recreational programming, as you can see in the more elongated reports. So some of the highlights from the input in the surveys, so strong demand for trails, swimming facilities, playgrounds, and community centers. About seventy percent of respondents support a potential bond to fund park improvements. And there's a call for more shaded areas, indoor, outdoor, fitness amenities, and safer and cleaner parks. So some of the key recommendations, kind of looking at the short term, midterm, and long term. Some short-term upgrades, Samuel Wiley Park upgrades, Old City Park upgrades, and Campbell Park upgrades, including restroom, playground facilities, and some site furnishings. Some more long-term upgrades include enhancing Cleveland Municipal Sports Park, including adding soccer fields, potential amphitheaters, splash pad amenities, and even trails. And so it's important to note that, you know, these recommendations are nice to have in writing, but, you know, we've been evaluating some of these improvements that the plan contemplates already, so proactively. So it's just good to have that kind of shown in the plan itself. But it also encourages new park development, so underserved areas, particularly those outside of a ten-minute walk from existing parks, which is a lot of the newer areas of development and some other areas around Cleveland, given kind of our strange geography. And so the implementation strategy on this is to focus kind of on the low-hanging fruit. You know, definitely improve what we have, maintain existing parks, but also look at, you know, phased approaches, implementing phased kind of improvements at some facilities and evaluating our funding opportunities, whether that's bond, grants, or partnerships. And also to encourage ongoing community feedback. So we want to, you know, this is, this was good to do as part of this process, but we want to go back to the community year after year and kind of see how we're doing and how they're grading us on our park system. So that's a general overview. Again, you have the detailed report. I'm still familiarizing myself with all those pages, and I'm sure the staff is as well. So we'll try to do our best if you have any questions, but we do recommend approval and adoption of the strategic plan for parks.
Make a motion to approve item number sixteen.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Buckley. I have a second by Ms. Hall. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five to zero. I just want to add a comment on the Park Strategic Plan. You know, you all put a lot of time and effort into that. And I've noticed, you know, over the last several years, you know, we, we slowly but surely, you know, we're replacing equipment, we're upgrading, we're spreading it out over all the different parks. You know, you know, we don't have the funding and funding to just redo everything in all the parks, but I think you all are doing a tremendous job, you know, by, you know, just taking it one win at a time. You know, whether it's new picnic tables, some new playground equipment, you know, we're just taking it one step at a time. So keep doing what you're doing.
Yeah, and now that it's adopted, we'll go ahead and get that information on our city website. We'll try to push that out on Facebook, you know, accessibility for the public to see the findings of the plan and the outcomes and recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Emilio. Now you're going to hang around for the...
Yes, I will.
Okay, item number seventeen, code enforcement update.
Yes, so Eric is out on some, some family medical leave, so I'll do my best here. I just wanted to provide a simple, you know, snapshot, if, next slide please, an overview of kind of what we've been dealing with since Erica's came on kind of in-house. You know, if you'll remember, we have a third-party consultant that handles some of the more routine things, but there's some things that obviously fall outside of that that we want to address. So this is kind of a makeup of the different types of violations and things that we respond to outside of the normal issues and complaints. We did hear from y'all at the retreat, you know, we're trying to figure out ways to make data and reporting more accessible and some of that information available, you know, transparency and open governance. So we're still evaluating those tools, and those might, you know, come up through the budget process on maybe different tools that we may need to achieve that. But this is, again, all I really have to share with you this evening. We do have a number of things, issues that we are aware of, we are working towards incremental kind of steps. There is, due process is an important part of code enforcement. So, you know, if these issues do arise to a court of jurisdiction, we want to make sure that we've dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. So, you know, we may, it may seem like we're not doing much, but we are doing things behind, behind the scenes, of course.
Okay.
I hope you can answer any questions.
Well, I just want to, you know, add to what you're saying, you know, it is a process. You know, I get a lot of complaints from people, you know, we need this cleaned up, we need it cleaned up now. You know, but when you're dealing with private property, you know, by law, you know, there is a process that you have to go through. You know, we are prioritizing the downtown area. I mean, that's what the citizens of Cleveland want. You know, we're going to develop our downtown. So if you have property that's in violation, you know, we're going to have to go through that process. It's not about your last name, who you know. You know, we have a officer, his job is to identify violations and take care of it. So if you have property in violation, you know, you will be getting talked to. So, but, you know, that's all in what our goal is here in Cleveland, you know, is to improve. And especially with that downtown, you know, we have, you know, if you notice, probably ninety percent of the businesses are, you know, probably in code. But for those that have, you know, right now, that South Side Bank is almost complete. You know, we had the Prosperity Bank, you know, and a lot of other businesses have done restoring the old town. And that's one of our main priorities. And in the residential areas, it's the same thing. You know, our code enforcement officer, he identifies violations, okay? And we have to get it cleaned up. So it's not about your last name, about what went on in the past and all of that. The citizens of Cleveland want Cleveland cleaned up, and that's at the top of our list. And that's what we're going to do. So just, just keep doing what you're doing. Appreciate it. And, you know, even though it's small steps, we taking steps, though.
Yes, we are.
So, you know, and just, you know, and to the public, it's a process. We just can't go there and, okay, by next week, you got to have all this cleaned up. You know, by law, we can't do that. It's a process.
Yes.
Okay, so thank you, Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments on that? Anyone else like it? Okay, thank you, Emilio. Okay, item number eighteen, authorize staff to seek RFP for agricultural use near the municipal airport. Would that be Ms. Erin Garten?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This item is in reference to the agricultural land directly across from Cleveland Municipal Airport. The land is currently being used for agricultural purposes, pasture land. The gentleman who currently occupies that land, he just uses it for his animals, for grazing. It's approximately twenty-four acres. And if it pleases the council, we want to request approval to put out a new RFP for that land. There is currently no contract that was found by either the tenant or our side. So we want to request a new RFP for that ag land.
I would like to make a motion to authorize staff to seek RFP for agricultural land use near Municipal Airport.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. David. I have a second by Ms. Hall. All those in favor?
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah, hold on. Yeah, go ahead.
Just so everyone knows, that property across the street, and there's nothing that can be built on that property because of the airport, because of the, the crack, what is it?
Runway protection zone.
I don't remember the exact term. You know it. So that's why they're doing the agriculture side of it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buckley. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, item number nineteen, discussion and possible action of updating Civic Center's AV system. That would be Ms. Ashley.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. Thank you for having me. As many of you know, the Civic Center AV system has been an issue for a very, very long time. The system was put back, put in many years ago from having issues with the microphones connecting to the projectors not being able to connect to laptops and having to pay multiple trip charges for our current company who we use Avanex to come out as they do not do remote. So we are currently, currently, a lot of the system is obsolete. We require upgrading of transmitters for optimal functioning. The upgrades from Ford AV will come with a one-year warranty with the option to add another two years in fiscal year twenty-six. So we wouldn't even have to touch the budget for this year. It would be added, something that we can add for the following year. Staff will also have the ability to call Ford AV for them to be able to remote in. This is absolutely something that we don't have at all, like I said, with the current. So them being able to remote in and help troubleshoot if anything was to happen is like a win-win for me. And then we would like to just be able to continue to offer customer service through our equipment that we provide. This is something that is rented out by renters. It's not consistent. Sometimes when we do have to troubleshoot, they'll tell us one thing, we try to do it, and it, it just won't work. Even our IT Brandon, who we have on staff that is contracted, he has not been able to help us sometimes as well due to the fact that they won't allow him access to remote in or to help us troubleshoot. So pretty much the proposal, this proposal with Ford AV comes through our tips purchasing co-op. So they are one that has already been bidded out for the lowest pricing. This project of the AV system would be a one-time capital improvement to our building. And you do have the proposal there. The proposal is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. This proposal will also give the ability for projectors to be upgraded in the future as well as being able to build out to where we can add them to the other fourths of the ballroom as well as even in a conference room as well. So we're just asking for council's approval to use our fund balance, which is a restricted use for our AV system at the Civic Center so that we can function a lot better.
I'll make a motion that we use the fund balance for a one-time capital improvement in the amount of one hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred eleven dollars to update the Civic Center's AV system.
Second.
And I do have Mr. Scott Birch here with Ford AV, if you have any questions on the proposal as well.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Okay, do I have any questions? Okay, Mr. Buckley.
On this motion, if we want to do the, the add the year, the extended warranty, do we need to have that on this motion? Or can we do that when we come to budget season and put it in the new budget?
For the...
For the...
The two-year?
The two, two or three year?
To adding the two-year. We don't have to do it right now. We can add it at the second, in next fiscal year budget.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that this money that is being used, that she's requested the fund balance, is coming out of hotel fund, so that the money will be there. That's a restricted fund. No one can use it except Ashley with the, for the, different purposes, yes. It has to meet certain requirements. So even if we can put it in this year's budget and utilize it out of fund balance this year, or we can budget it for next year, either way, the money will be there because it's restricted. restricted.
Timetable-wise, when, when were you looking to adding the projector?
Um, in the other fourths of the ballroom.
I mean, like when?
Oh, um, as far as getting it done, as soon as we get the approval, then we could get with Mr. Birch on getting everything started.
No, I mean, on the projector itself, projector, projector's a second line item. So we do, we approved the one twenty-eight, but there's a, there's an expansion.
Well, yes, for us to be, so they're gonna use our current projectors, the other projectors are for um the other fourths of the ballroom. Um, we did not have a timeline specifically on that just yet. It could be something that is optional to add um now, or we can wait for it. We were just trying to get the system in and the rack, um, the equipment rack done um and in place, yes. But it will still function with the new system, yes.
That was gonna be the next question.
And that's what they're building out. Am I correct, Scott?
So you'll have full functionality?
Correct, correct. Everything will still function, correct? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Hall, I have a second by Ms. David. All those in favor? Excuse me, motion carries, uh five to zero, uh, motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you so much, we greatly appreciate it.
Okay, well, I just want to uh thank the council, you know, um, I go to those uh chamber luncheons, you know, every month, and I was at an event there this past weekend, and, and the system is, is functionable, but uh it, it's, it needs, it needs upgrade. So uh I just want to thank the council, and you know, because that's another small win, you know, small wins, and, and it all adds up. And once again, thank you, Council. Okay, now I'm gonna move on to item number twenty, appointment of the following uh board and commissions, financial audit committee.
Evening again. So this is just the um appointment of uh Lee to the finance uh committee. We, the committee consists of myself, the uh usually the city manager, the mayor, and a member of council, which uh Councilman Warwick is currently on the board. So this is just to replace Scott with Lee.
The motion we approve, move uh Lee and Scott's spot for the financial audit committee.
Okay, I have a, a motion by Mr. Buckley, I have a second by Mr. Magwaters, all those in favor? Okay, uh, motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, that will uh conclude our uh regular open session. Uh, Tommy, did you have anything? I got one quick item. Uh, so we're gonna, executive session, council reserves the right to adjourn to executive session at any time during this meeting to discuss any item on the agenda as authorized by chapter five-five-one of the Open Meetings Act. Okay, so we will adjourn. He, well, okay, my bad, well. Yeah, uh, seven twenty. Okay, there was no action taken, and I say that we adjourn. See y'all next month, hopefully.
July third, see you July third.
July third, yeah, hey, don't forget, don't forget the fireworks.